All council members are present except Councilman Alsapp has been excused. Um, I've asked Councilman Clark if he could give us an invocation, Councilwoman Wilson to lead us in the pledge. If you'd like to stand and join us.
Our Father in heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity we had to gather tonight as the city council for the city of Sholo. We're thankful for the conditions in which we were able to meet and we are thankful for the citizens of Sholo and for the wonderful, beautiful surroundings that we're able to live in. We're thankful for the wonderful staff that we have at the city of Sholo. We pray that thou continue to bless them and bless the people of the city of Sholo with the rates of COVID cases have been dropping. We pray that that direction will continue to go down and that we will be able to uh get back to life as normal in our beautiful mountain community. We ask that tonight, as we deliberate and as we discuss the items on the agenda, that we'll be able to do so in a manner that is pleasing unto thee. And we'll be able to, if we have to disagree, that we will disagree in a cordial and a professional manner and that we'll be able to put the the needs of the citizens of Sholo first and foremost. We again thank thee for all that we have and we ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much. Appreciate that. Um, like, thank you all for joining us here tonight and those watching us on channel fifty-six or any other means of communication. We appreciate that. At this time, I'm going to turn over special events. I'm going to turn it over to Sheriff Klaus for a for a brief report. That's what I heard.
Did you do call the public?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. See, I jumped ahead of the game. Call the public. Any citizens desiring to speak on a matter that was within the jurisdiction of the city council may do so at this time. Now seeing nobody move. Now I'll turn it over to Sheriff Klaus. Sorry about that. I wanted to give you more time, so I was going to skip that.
Well, thank you. Good evening and uh Mayor and members of the council and staff. I will keep this as short as I can, but we will leave it open for questions at the end. So the reason um we're here this evening is um MCAT, which is an acronym for major crimes apprehension team, which is a multi-agency drug task force or major crime task force in the Navajo County. Uh consists of a board of all the local chiefs of police from the five uh police departments and the sheriff's office and the county attorney's office. And earlier last year, we decided as a board that it would be uh in our best interest to go around and to brief the city councils that invest into this uh task force and give them a brief update on the the uh status of the uh MCAT and what we've been working on. So quick introduction of some people that have joined me here. We have Chief Brian Swaney. He's the chief deputy from the sheriff's office and we have Lieutenant Wiley Williams. He's the task force commander that uh supervises the two sergeants and all the detectives that are assigned to the task force from all the police departments. And um they're both new or Wiley's new in his position. So um last year, Chief Swaney joined the uh Navajo County Sheriff's Office. And one of the first things that we wanted to accomplish as a team was to redirect and kind of sharpen the sword of the the MCAT task force. It has been a longstanding task force that dates back into the eighties. It was first formed in about nineteen eighty-five and it was first called Eyelid. It was a task force that was ran by just the sheriff's office. Then in the nineties, they came up with MCAT. And that's when other uh cities started joining it and they would put in a detective into that task force. And their mission was to combat crime, no matter where it lied within the county. Um, the as as things have evolved, the the task force has grown and is being able to um find additional funding. It is funded by four uh sources. Uh, we received a HIDA designation in two thousand nine, which is pretty significant. HIDA is another acronym in law enforcement that we probably all get tired of, but it's for high intensity drug trafficking area. And that helps us get federal funding from uh DEA and other sources from the federal government. So that that funding allows to pay for our task force commander Lieutenant Williams and it also pays for uh vehicles and overtime. Uh additional funding as we apply through the state, which is called the Burn Jag or through ACJC. And it's a it's a uh a grant that we receive annually that helps all the participating agencies to receive funding to pay for that detective. So each participating agency sends a detective to this task force that is managed by the sheriff's office. And then in turn, they receive forty thousand dollars to pay for that detective that they put in there through this grant funding through ACJC. An additional ten thousand is also uh received for overtime and also vehicles provided. Um, then of course, then we have general funds that kind of fill in fill in some of the other gaps that um. So with that, the the city of Sholo has been a longtime partner in this task force dating back for at least twenty years. And with that, the chief of police, uh Chief Joe Shelley has off, he has put uh a task force member in that continuously for all these years and he's even provided uh supervision. He's had supervisors that have been uh part of that task force and we've always had great um we've always had great commitment from the city and we've always received great uh members and investigators that have been uh committed to that. So uh going back to when Brian Swaney joined the sheriff's office and Lieutenant Williams was put in, we wanted to redirect our team because we felt that everything always needs a shakeup every once in a while or some some things need to be just uh reexamined and reevaluated. Um, the task force was performing well. We were getting a lot of arrests. We're getting a lot of statistics um with our interdiction team. But we wanted to make sure that the cities that were providing it that were um that were um contributing to this task force, that they were getting returned on their investment, which would be more local enforcement and more direct enforcement on uh crimes that are affecting not only your city, but the surrounding communities and that the chiefs of each of these uh police departments had a task force that was at their disposal that they could use for special projects. And so with that, we've we've re we refocused our um our commander to really work closely with the chiefs, the local uh CI divisions with each of these municipalities so that they now have an additional task force that they can help work on some of these um major crimes. So I'm going to have uh Chief Swaney, he's going to come give a brief uh recap on some of the statistics and some of the arrests and a couple of cases that we've been evolved in directly here in Sholo where we've seen that uh partnership. You often hear about the word partnership in government. This to me is one of the longest lasting. We've got thirty-five years of partnership here in this task force. And it's it's a lot of investment that the city has to put in and the county puts in. And this is something that I we want to continue to see work and we've we've invested a lot. And we've seen the city match that investment and we've seen great results come from that. And that comes directly because of hard workers, uh hard task force commanders like Lieutenant Williams and uh Chief Shelley that put in their best guys to come make sure this task force runs effectively. So Chief.
Thank you. Counsel, Mayor, staff, Speedy. Thank you for letting us come in and talk today. There's a little history there. I figured I was behind her many a times uh going somewhere. But uh uh thank you for this opportunity. I'm assuming I can just scroll here. Uh, does everybody have a copy of this uh of the handout?
Sitting right in front of us electronically, yeah.
Fancy. All right. We don't have anything like that at the county. So I just, uh, the first page here just kind of lists out all the agencies that are involved. Uh, and the first the first four there are the Navajo County Sheriff's Office, Sholo PD, Winslow PD, and then the HIDA. Those uh those are the uh agencies that are that are actively working in the task force each and every day. The the ones below that are identified as partnering agencies are other agencies that we work with day in and day out from from DPS to State Game Task Force, Marshall's Office, uh HSI, uh you know, which is Homeland Security Investigations, the DEA out of uh Phoenix and Flagstaff, the FBI agencies, both out of Flagstaff and the Pine Top Office, and then the Navajo County Probation Department. And without those partnerships, like the sheriff was talking about, we don't have, we don't have success. You have to work with these other with these other agencies and we've got a fantastic working relationship with each and every one of them. Just some quick and annual statistics uh from from MCAT. This is going to be uh calendar year twenty twenty. Overall, a hundred and sixty-six pounds of methamphetamine, uh fif- over fifteen pounds of heroin, sixteen pounds of cocaine, uh four hundred and forty-nine pounds of marijuana, fifty-three thousand key in on that, the fifty-three thousand fentanyl pills have been apprehended and taken off the street uh by MCAT detectives. That is, that is absolutely a phenomenal number. Uh, and then US currency, they've seized forty-eight thousand and some change. In addition to that, there's uh there's two residences right now currently in in uh in the asset forfeiture uh process, ones in Winslow and ones in Heber that were both tied to local drug dealers. And we were able to, through the investigation of the detectives, be able to identify this house has been funded and paid for by drug proceeds. And uh so the county attorney's office is actively uh going after. They're not real nice houses, I can assure you that, but they are, you know, the the end result, the end result of drug dealers is what? It's money. It's money and assets. So uh by us taking that, taking that asset, we have eliminated that drug operation completely. Some additional uh statistics from our proactive uh successes. Physical arrest ninety-six. That may not seem like a whole heck of a lot, but as the sheriff, as the sheriff talked about on the on the front side of twenty twenty, uh starting in about about February through uh the first of July, it was was when we were doing an audit and kind of a rebuild and and a redirecting of the of the task force. Therefore, their statistics and their proactive efforts were significantly reduced. And what we were doing is kind of stepping back, reevaluating how we were doing business and and changed our course of direction to more of an intelligence-led uh investigation basis. So the front part of the year was was a little bit lighter on the uh on the statistics, but uh I would anticipate that come twenty twenty-one, you can take that ninety-six and you and you double that. And those are ninety-six individuals that MCAT detectives put handcuffs on and took them to jail. Uh, the agency assists, we assisted uh agencies three hundred and twenty-three times. That could be from a ten-minute, a ten-minute interaction to a month-long interaction. I don't have it broke down by time, but those were total instances. Uh, search warrants, uh forty-five vehicles and thirty and sixteen uh residential search warrants. And uh many of you know that a a search warrant affidavit, first of all, it takes a lot of time to develop the probable cause to put into the affidavit and it takes quite a bit of time just getting the paperwork completed. And then the then the search warrant, you go to serve it, that could be an eight-hour, that could be an eight-hour processing, processing through that uh residence. And here in the city of Sholo, uh MCAT detectives assisted uh city police officers a total of thirteen times. Again, the amount of time on that, I don't know, but thirteen different occasions. So just a couple of highlights of of MCAT activity that took place uh here in within the city limits of Sholo. Uh, June of twenty twenty, uh detectives executed a search warrant at eleven thirty-one East Dusa Clubs. And even though it's been thirty years since I was a city of Sholo police officer, I I remember where that's at. That's the Thunderbird Motel. Uh, following a dangerous drug sales investigation. Uh, methamphetamine, heroin, marijuana, and a bunch of unknown pills at this point in time were uh are were seized along with sales and disha, so evidence of sales. Uh, two subjects were arrested on a and on dangerous sales, dangerous drug sales charges and booked into the Navajo County Jail. The uh in August, just a couple of months later, uh detectives responded to a Sholo PD officer who had who had advised that they had some information regarding uh dangerous drug sales. Uh, that investigation and follow-up resulted in uh the seizure of eighty-one fentanyl pills that were destined to be sold right here in Sholo. And uh I'm sure everybody is aware and have heard of the dangers of of fentanyl and how how uh how dangerous it is. It's just absolutely uh it's it's a hundred times more powerful than than morphine. It's a very, very dangerous stuff, but eighty-one of those pills were seized. Five point seven grams of methamphetamine and and five point seven grams doesn't seem like a whole lot, but they sell, they sell methamphetamine and heroin by the gram. So you know, anywhere from sixty to a hundred dollars per gram is what that goes for. Uh, subjects were arrested on dangerous drug sales and crimes against children. There was children in the home with this fentanyl being being uh sold. This case, due to the due to the detectives' work, they were able to find additional information of where this the source of this fentanyl was coming from, which ended up being down in the valley. And uh they have taken their, they take, they took their case, forwarded it on to the Valley uh Task Force and they continued it on their end. So that's uh again, working on the drug trafficking organization. It got a little bit outside of our scope and then we would, you know, if we were to send all our detectives to Phoenix, what are we doing here? So we just kicked it to a partnering task force and they they took it to the next level. Also, uh MCAT detectives uh worked a, not just drugs, but they worked a fraudulent uh credit card scam stemming from a report taken at the Tractor Supply in Sholo. Uh, the Sholo Police Department is the one that took the initial report on that. Detectives through another investigation found these individuals, the suspects of those individuals that had ties into Apache County and into the county, some county islands uh east of of Snowflake. So they were able to tie all that together, working with the city of Sholo. So that's just a quick overview of of the uh of MCAT. Uh, I cannot echo the the sheriff's comments regarding uh regarding uh MCAT anymore. Uh, it is, it is a fantastic, well-respected uh drug task force in the state in this region of the United States. Very proud to be a part of it. Uh, when I worked at DPS, I worked hand-in-hand with MCAT in both patrol narcotics and game when I was there. So uh very proud to be a part of this, a part of this team and and uh uh we're looking forward to a good future. And 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 like, like the sheriff said, not only did Chief Shelley send a detective, he sent one of the best. And uh and Detective Lowe is a fantastic, a fantastic detective, works his tail off each and every day. So and if we're open for questions, got the lieutenant here, if you have any specific questions or or uh or for myself or the sheriff.
I don't really have a question to start off with. Just thank you guys for what you do. Um, it's amazing to see that and that's just less than a year ago. The pills that you're pulling off the streets. I was hoping that you could guys could get Wiley up here to give some kind of talk. I know how he how red he turns, but I, while everybody's out else is asking a question, I'm going to come up with something for Wiley. I hope, just to get him up here. So prepare Wiley.
We welcome that.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
I'd like to say something. In all my years as a criminal defense investigator, I have many times interviewed um MCAT detectives and they've always been very professional and the reports have been always very good and it it's nice to know that if if Williams arrested somebody, I'm sorry, it's Lieutenant Williams now, but you know, arrested somebody, you know that that's that's a good case, you know, and that's what's always been nice about the sheriff's office and and Sholo PD and and those other ones, the people that work in MCAT, I've always thought did a really good job.
So thank you. Couple of guys that work out of Brant's office and if they don't write a good report, they're uh they're they're a couple of attorneys are working them over pretty well.
Are you afraid to ask a question or something?
No, I I was going to take at last, I I'll just say, you know, I wanted to, you know, publicly thank the sheriff and the chief as well as Lieutenant Williams, as well as all of the team that that MCAT is. Um, you know, we don't you don't realize how much they sacrificed to be on the MCAT team. Um, part of my day job is I'm able to uh to be the legal advisor to not only MCAT, but to the SRT team. And just a couple of weeks ago, we got a call on a Saturday, right? And we were having a debrief at the police station and I mean, they they were there from one o'clock until nine or ten o'clock, right? And 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 that's their Saturday. That was the day before Valentine's Day and that was the weekend of President's Day. And so our MCAT detectives and our CI and a lot of these law enforcement individuals there, they're really unsung heroes who who spend a lot of time away from their families to keep, you know, these this drug trafficking and and that kind of stuff, these major crimes from happening really here in our city. And so we owe them a debt of gratitude for the time that they sacrifice away from their families and and like uh like Councilwoman Wilson said, the the professionalism that they bring is is second to none. Um, I have a chance to rub shoulders with a lot of people from the valley, you know, like we're partners with FBI and we're partners with Homeland Security and DEA. And you won't find better detectives than what we have in our MCAT over at the federal level. Um, in fact, it kind of, it's frustrating sometimes because you hear of the the federal um agents are trying to poach our detectives from MCAT on a on a regular basis because of the quality work that they do. And it's a testament to the leadership of the sheriff and to Chief Swaney and what they do. And and we're really fortunate as a city of Sholo to have this this type of partnership. So I appreciate uh the sheriff and and the chief and Chief uh Shelley for for making sure that this continues, you know. Policemen are not always the uh the easiest to get along with. And so the fact that this partnership's been able to go on for thirty-five years is a testament to to each one of you kind of putting aside ego sometimes when issues arise and making sure that you do what's best for the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bye, sir.
I'll just say ditto to everything.
Right.
I agree. It's been a longstanding partnership that we've really um been successful at and we appreciate all your work and and not only are you unsung heroes, but your families are and we appreciate all the sacrifices that they make for the communities.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to say thank you and ditto and go on everyone else said, um, I appreciate what you guys do. Thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate it.
I just want to uh ask you to be very careful. We've already lost one of those kinds of people here on the mountain. And uh it was a real shocker when it did happen. And I know that when you leave your families in the morning, there's an assuredness in your mind that you'll be coming back. But don't let that bring your guard down. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. The only thing I can think for Wiley, I I've been here thinking of something. I've known it for so many years, but but Wiley, can can you come up to the podium just for a minute? I promise I'm not going to embarrass you because it's a really basic question, but how long have you been with the Sheriff's Department? See, he's turning red already. How long you been with the Sheriff's Department?
With the Sheriff's Department, I've been here since about two thousand and nine, but I've been on the mountain either working for Sholo Police Department or Snowflake Police Department for twenty-three years.
Right. Thank you too for everything you do. Appreciate that. I had to figure something out, even though I wasn't at the meeting.
You handled it well, right?
Thank you guys very much and be safe out there, please.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
All right, moving right along, we'll go to the consent calendar. Um, items to consider is consideration of acceptance of West Cooley sewer replacement, consideration of resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash O two for in a government agreement with the town of Snowflake. Consideration of acceptance of a state Arizona Department of Homeland Security grant. And wow, consideration of acceptance of a grant amendment from the governor's office. Consideration of acceptance of a grant from the governor's office of the highway safety. And considerations of the minutes of the Sholo City Council, but before I get a motion, I don't want to pull this off the agenda, but I I'd like Mr. Brimhall to just come up and give us a little insight on um item B. I just think that's kind of a I read that and I just thought that's kind of a neat thing that we can do with the communities, um, local communities. So if you'd just kind of explain that a little bit, I appreciate it.
Bet. It's uh Mayor Counsel. Good to be here. Um, so a little uh history on this. A couple of weeks ago, we had the Snowflake Library contact Lisa over our manager at the library here and um expressed the need for some shelving. And uh Lisa said, well, we have some shelving and storage that we haven't used in years that we kind of need to get rid of. We got together, uh myself, Ed and Morgan, put together an IGA, obviously in consultation with uh city manager from Snowflake and um put this IGA together to help out the the Snowflake Library. And in return, they're going to give us some of their expertise on some of the busier times of year during the Fourth of July parade. We'll get some support from their uh police officers here during a very busy time, what we hope to be a very busy time this upcoming year. And um they've got a lot of really important um knowledge, uh knowledge base at their library, so they're going to help us out with some of the programming that we do. Um, just some of their expertise. So we thought that was a fair trade. They help us, we help them and uh we get rid of some of our surplus.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Like I said, I I know it wasn't anything major, but I just wanted to be on record. I think that's really cool that how good we work with the communities. Anybody else have anything they want to mention on that item? If not, I appreciate that, Jay, very much. If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I make that motion to accept the consent.
I got a motion, any second, second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion passed. Thank you. I got to do that so I can look around fast enough. It didn't work a few times, so. All right, moving right along to new business, consideration of award of a construct, construction contract for Eleventh Avenue Water Ri- Water Replacement. City of Sholo project number W dash O six twenty-one.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Uh, the city's fiscal year twenty twenty-one capital improvements plan budget includes a total of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a water line improvement project labeled Eleventh Ave Owens to McNeil. Scope of work for this project consists of replacing approximately fifteen hundred linear feet of aging and deteriorating eight-inch AC water line with new eight-inch PVC water main, uh new water services, fire hydrants, and replacing uh any existing asphalt or concrete needing to be removed. Work shall take place between eleventh or in Eleventh Avenue between West Owens to West McNeil. And the section of that's paved in Eleventh Avenue between that stretch is scheduled for asphalt replacement in the upcoming months. Project was designed by city engineering staff with a construction estimate of one hundred and forty-eight thousand. Uh, the budget was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Apache Underground Excavating at a hundred and forty-four thousand twenty dollars. Enrolling specialty contracting at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the Eleventh Avenue Waterline Replacement, City of Sholo Project W zero six two one uh to Apache Underground Excavating for that amount not to exceed the one hundred and forty-four thousand twenty dollars. Uh, the bid tab uh for the work is attached. I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions? Comments or motions?
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to award the construction contract to the Eleventh Avenue Waterline Replacement, City of Sholo Project number W O six two one to Apache Underground and Excavating in an amount not to exceed forty-four, one hundred and forty-four thousand twenty dollars. No sense.
Thank you. Councilman Hatch, got a motion, any second? Councilman Adams, got a motion and a second? Anybody else got any comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you, sir. Okay, moving right along, item B. You stay where you're at. Consideration of award of construction contract for North Eighth Street and East Huning Waterline Replacement, City of Sholo Project number W eleven twenty-one.
All right, city's uh twenty twenty-one capital improvement budget also includes a total of seventy-five thousand dollars for a water line project labeled Downtown AC Replacement. Uh, scope of work includes um replacing about seven hundred linear feet of aging six-inch AC water line uh with new eight-inch PVC mains, uh new water services, fire hydrants, and replacing the asphalt and concrete. Scope of work shall take place in North Eighth Street from East McNeil to East Huning and in East Huning from North Eighth Street over to North Ninth Street. Uh, project was designed by city engineering staff with a construction estimate of eighty-six thousand. Project was bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Apache Underground Excavating, six hundred or sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. Rolling specialty contracting at eighty-three thousand, three hundred dollars and ASR construction at a hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the North Eighth Street and East Huning Waterline Replacement, City of Sholo Project W one one two one to Apache Underground Excavating for the amount not to exceed sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, the bid uh tabulation for the scope works attached as well. I'm available for any questions.
Mayor?
Sure.
So there's a big spread on the the bids, like sixty-six thousand to a hundred and eight.
Yes.
Is there any, I mean, you
Just to find that?
Yeah, thank you.
I believe ASR construction is an out-of-town contractor coming up from the valley. Now, they have additional cost to move up here and do work up here. You'll sometimes you'll see those contractors from out of town just naturally be a little higher. Um, and also the um the pricing from contractors these days is really a reflection of how busy they are. If they want to take smaller jobs like this for them, this is considered a small job. Um, I think I had ten or twelve contractors show up for the pre-bid interested in this project. And we only got three bids, so people are very busy as well, so.
Shane, there's a, there's a twenty thousand dollar difference though from it looks like from your construction estimate to the actual amount. Do you know why there's that discrepancy?
Uh, no, we looked at the bid. Um, and they were just pretty aggressive on the pricing.
Really?
Yeah. What we do when we do our engineering estimates is we'll take the past two or three projects, kind of average them together, see if there's anything that could pick the price up. Um, and they just came in pretty aggressively.
Okay. And is, and and this is just And is, and this is just from my own education, Mr. Mutter, is this, is the anticipated portion of this project for the, the water line, are we going to be extending the sidewalks and stuff like that down that portion of Hunning and, and down, I think it's Eighth Street at some point, is that, has that all been completed, or is that in the future phases?
It, it's in a future phase of downtown improvements, and no, we have not done that section yet, but it'll be in a future phase.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Shane.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move toward the construction contract for the North Eighth Street and East Hunning Water Line Replacement, City of Sholo, project number W-1121, to Apache Underground Excavating in an amount not to exceed 66,615 dollars and zero cents.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second, Councilwoman Wilson. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Shane.
All right, next item on the agenda is consideration, recommendation to the Federal Aviation Administration to award professional construction administration services contract for the Sholo Regional Airport Runway South Apron rehabilitation. Mr. Bar.
Right. Evening, Mayor, council members. On July 16th, 2019, city council awarded professional services contract to Armstrong Consultants for engineering services at the Sholo Regional Airport. Engineering and construction administrative services for several projects, including rehabilitation of the South Apron, are included in the services provided by, excuse me, by Armstrong Consultants. On January 5th, 2021, the FAA requested the City of Sholo submit a recommendation to award Armstrong Consultants a contract for the construction services, administration services for the South Apron Rehabilitation Project. An independent fee estimate for the construction administrative, excuse me, administration services was received from independent fee estimates LLC in the amount of 209,072 dollars and 45 cents. And Armstrong Consultants' fees for this service was 207,000 dollars, 160 dollars, 207,160 dollars. Staff recommends submitting to the FAA a recommendation to award Armstrong Consultants professional construction administration services contract for the rehabilitation of the South Apron at the Sholo Regional Airport with administrative services costs not to exceed 207,160 dollars. Authorized the mayor to sign the recommendation. Recommendation letter is attached, and I do want to point out the fiscal, in fact, 95% of the share of this project is going to be covered by the FAA, and that's 196,802, while 2.5% will be for ADOT, as well as for the city, that's 5,179 dollars.
Wow. Any comments or questions, Councilwoman Wilson?
Since I wasn't here back in July 16th of 2019, so in when they originally awarded a contract, so is, was that a different project, and now this is a new project?
So this, that, that awarding was their, the on-call engineering firm for the airport. And when that contract is awarded, there is a list of projects that, that consultant is going to be completing during the time they are serving our community. The South Apron was listed on that, and really just the grant process for each major project that an airport has, FAA asks that they submit a recommendation of award for that specific project, even though they already on, are on call for airport.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Vice Mayor.
I move to recommend to the Federal Aviation Administration the award of a professional construction administration services contract to Armstrong Consultants for the rehabilitation of the South Apron at Sholo Regional Airport with administrative services costs not to exceed 2,000, 207,160 dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign the recommendation.
All right, thank you. Got a motion, I need a second. Councilman Adams, second, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, sir. We'd be kind of crazy not to do that project, huh?
Yeah.
It's like somebody's paying for it. Probably us eventually. All right, next item on the agenda is consideration of abandonment of condominium plat for Torion Residential Storage Facility. Mr. Tregask.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. On December 16th of 2008, the city council approved the final plat for the Torion Residential Storage Facility condominiums. Plat was subsequently recorded in Navajo County. This development allowed for the construction of nine storage unit buildings housing a total of 269 condominium storage units. An office is also included as part of this plat. This parcel was originally plotted as Track K and a portion of Track L of Torion Woods, and was approved separately as Torion Residential Storage Facility condominiums. Property owner has now requested that the Torion Residential Storage Facility condominiums plat be abandoned and revert back to a single parcel. Torion Golf Club LLC has ownership of all condominium spaces. This request is made in an effort to reduce taxes on the existing property. The storage units would then be rented to Torion property owners as opposed to being individually owned. As indicated on the attached condominium plat abandonment, quote, "All easements recorded with the Torion Woods final plat shall remain," end quote. Any future development of this property would be required to comply with the underlying zoning and resubmitting and approving preliminary development plans and final plats would also be required. No public roadways or utilities are affected by this request. Staff, as well as a representative of the applicant, are available for questions.
Any questions or comments?
How is this accessed?
So, excuse me, so the access for this project, as shown on the aerial, you'd come off of 60 onto, excuse me, Summit Trail, the very first left that you take goes down and accesses to the property. So it's accessed internally in Torion, not off of the highway or off of US 60.
Any other questions? Councilman Adams.
They're just abandoning that, it'll, it'll be just, just regular storage, is that a common thing to kind of go back and do that? I don't remember here.
It, it's, it's a common thing for storage units to be owned by one group or individual, and then individually leased or rented out. It's not a common thing to have them condominiumized and each one individually owned by a separate property owner. So by abandoning this plat, they're actually going back to what's most common, as opposed to staying with what's least common in that practice.
And I think you said that, at the beginning, it's a tax purpose too, right?
Yeah, right. Currently, each one of those storage unit condominiums is being taxed separately. Each one of those storage units has its own assessor parcel number. This would combine those back into one parcel number, which would result in one tax bill rather than 271.
All right, any other questions or comments, motions? I will, I move to abandon the condominium plat for Torion Residential Storage Facility condominium, condominiums, and revert to the acreage Track K and portion of Track L of Torion Woods, and more particularly described as AP number 309-04-001 through 270, 271 and 309-86-997A, and authorize the mayor to sign the associated documents. Got a motion, I need a second, second by Councilwoman Wilson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. All righty, next item on the agenda is summary of current events, council members. Have you got anything they would like to report? Councilman Adams, are you?
I am. Not worried that the museum would be opening up soon, so I think it'd be great if you could feel support there.
Awesome. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
We just got word that the ADHS has opened up vaccinations for 55 years and older, so keep looking at your website, the county's website, and sign up for your vaccination.
Thank you. I just, just, I guess, just a comment and sort of a report, we're, we're kind of moving forward on our barbecue event. I, I think some of you people on social media have seen that, and, and we all want to start planning to move forward, so this is kind of a step for, for us, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping we get to have it, I'm hoping all of our events come back, there's still, you know, I, I was asked that question today, how can you guys move forward when no one else can? Well, we're planning, we're not really moving forward, but we're planning to move forward. If the day comes and it's the way it is today, I can tell you, you know, I ran this contest for eight years now, I can tell you, if we're at the same conditions we are in May, we probably would have to cancel that, you know, as far as mitigation. If we want to do a mitigation plan prior to that event, maybe we could, but for this kind of an event, and for the events it's about, we probably would have to cancel it the way everything conditions today. But tomorrow it could change, and we're all hoping, I know everybody that could be watching, or everybody in this room is hoping and praying that, that we, we hear something soon from, from our governor, so we can continue moving forward. But that's kind of the plan, we want people to continue contacting the city about events, we want to move forward on them, whether we're going to have them or not, we don't know, we're, we're just hoping we can. So I've, I've taken not a lot of heat, but some phone calls in the past few days about that barbecue event, yes, I'm absolutely moving forward. If we have to do a big mitigation rule, we probably will cancel it. So we're just moving forward, hoping we, we can have it, so. City Manager.
Just a couple of things from the Recreation Department. They're making plans for the upcoming spring playdays, which will be held during spring break, March 15th through 18th, from 8:00 AM to noon at the Sholo Family Aquatic Center for boys and girls ages five to 12. The cost is $12 per day and $45 for the week. They're also working on the Easter event, which will be a drive-by event scheduled for Saturday, March 27th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM for ages one through 10, at the, again at the aquatic center. Cars will be able to drive by and receive a free Easter basket for each child in the vehicle. There will be 300 baskets available on a first-come, first-served basis. And they also have registration continuing for summer coed, men's and women's softball coed, men's and women's leagues through March 30th or until sold out, that's for their softball programs. And on any of these events, if you need more information, you can contact them at 532-4140. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take seconds. So me and my wife walk the park every day, and the park has this little program going on right now to find the rock with the leprechaun, or the four-leaf clover or five-leaf clover. We were the first ones yesterday, so I thought that was pretty cool. We found two, and they have over 20 out there. So if you walk the park, the trail in the park, look for the rocks, it usually takes us about 15 minutes to walk that. It's taken us like 25, because my wife's looking at every tree, turning every rock. It's kind of nice, they give you a gift, and, and we actually donated, we went to the playground after we got done walking from yesterday's thing and gave them out to the kids. So it's kind of cool, but when you walk the park, go look for some of those rocks. There's other rocks I've found too, I found five other ones, but it's kind of fun. Anyway, if nobody has wants seconds or first, and no other business before the council?
Scheduling meetings.
Scheduling meetings, we didn't have any. I, that's two things I forgot.
Just a reminder, we, on March 23rd, we have the council scheduled for interviews
on the vacancies on the different boards and commissions we have. Depending on the number of applicants we receive for that, we'll be in contact with the council and see when and if you need to do interviews. Okay, the deadline for the applications is not until this Friday, so we'll let you know more about that at your next meeting. Also, we'd like to check the availability of the council on a study session on March 30th, that's a Tuesday, it's a fifth Tuesday. We're hoping everybody will be available, we want to have a review of the file, the report from the Sports Facilities Advisory Group on the event center. You know, if you're available for that, we, we wanted to do it on an off Tuesday where we had plenty of time, we didn't run into another meeting, so we thought the 30th would work great, and we'll have someone from Sports Facilities Advisory Group available for that meeting too.
Is that, that's open to the public, isn't it?
It'll be open to the public, it'll be here in council chambers, but it'll be a study session.
Yeah, any input from the public would sure be nice.
So we'll probably, if it's okay with the council, we can start at 6:00 PM, if that works for you guys. Okay.
Okay, did I forget anything on the agenda before I move forward? Man, I'm not in a hurry, I really, I'm really not. All right, once again, no other business for the council, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Come on in.
I ran?